Yes.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Just I'm curious about the covered area of the new structure that you're proposing. In this question, I guess actually this question is for a town engineer. Does this structure count as new structure in terms of lot coverage because it has a deck on top?
No, according to the R sixty code and town code, it only counts as building coverage if it's enclosed or screened, not not covered. If it's covered, it's considered a projection and not a part of the building itself.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your only question?
Yes, that was really.
Thank you. Council member Barr, do you have any questions?
I had no concerns about building the the deck and terrace below it, but it just questions about whether you're planning any landscaping around it because there's some runoff associated with structures like that. And sometimes if you do landscaping, it can actually run off nicely. Any thoughts on that?
I believe Rebecca and Charles are planning to do some landscaping. I don't believe they've talked to the landscape architect just yet. But my understanding currently there is some existing landscaping. So I would imagine that they'll be filling in around the deck and the terrace.
Okay, thank you.
And I can briefly answer that. There it's actually not changing much of the the landscape, the vegetative landscape at all. It's there's already a stone, there's already stone, a stone terrace, and it's taking that out and replacing with a new one. But it's actually not covering more of the lot with hardscape than is already there.
Okay, thank you.
Before I call in, Councilor Heller, Councilor Barr, did you want to ask the town attorney whether that could be made a condition of the approval?
No, there's no need to do that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions? You're muted.
I'm not sure if I didn't hear this right, but Jeffrey, I could have sworn you said that they were applying for a variance, but they're not applying for a variance, right? Just a permit for existing, they're not going over any boundaries or anything, right?
That's correct.
I see, I see heads going yes, and I see heads going no. Okay.
If if that was the case, I may have incorrectly labeled it on on the mayor's introduction, but there's no variance required for the applicant.
Okay, then in that case, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ravak.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve the building permit application. Senator Beth Davis of BD Contractor Services on behalf of Charles Rebecca Borden to replace the existing rear yard deck with a new enclosed rear deck at the property located at fifty six oh five Warwick Place.
Second. Mister, I heard Councilmember Kumar second. Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. It passed unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Associated with the project and good luck to you. We will now move to the next hearing. This is for fifty six oh, I'm sorry, fifty five twenty two Graystone Street. Today is November first, twenty twenty one. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for variance application twenty one ten two to consider an amendment to the existing building permit granted to Miriam Rosenthal and Michael Phillips for the property located at fifty five twenty two Graystone Street. This hearing is being audited or recorded. We ask that all speakers speak at one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Following that, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Following that, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss amongst themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We will now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may recall, the applicants came before the council at its September hearing and sought a variance for a balcony that extended into the front yard setback. At that time, the the variance was denied, but the permit itself granted. So the work for the rest of the project was granted. The applicant has gone back and done some architectural drawings to add a new overhang structure, which they are now defining as a deck and are essentially asking the council to make a determination on the definition of that structure so that they can then go to Montgomery County and get a revised permit. So tonight, the council is making a determination on the definition of that structure, not granting a permit, a permit amendment, but essentially considering approval of a permit contingent on the county accepting that change. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Doug, if you have anything else that you'd like to add.
No, that's that's enough.
And I don't know if Ron, if you had anything that you you wanted to add at this at this time?
No, nothing really to add. I think you you summed it up well, Matt. So the the applicants are requesting that the permit that was issued with a condition that a roof be placed in the area where the the balcony was formally proposed. You know, instead of that, the applicants are asking for permission for what they've termed a deck, and they've submitted a letter from Mark Beal at the County Department of Permitting Services. And the county has reached the interpretation that this is a deck because it's not canvaledared, canvaledared and has legs. So the the town code does not define deck or balcony. As we discussed at the last meeting, these two building elements are treated differently under the code. The the general purpose is to promote offsets to facades that break up the visual mass. So a balcony no wider than ten feet is allowed to project three feet into a setback, and a deck is allowed to project nine feet into a setback. And so, you know, how you determine what this element is will have a bearing on how far it's allowed to project into the setback.
Okay, thank you. Is there is there anything else from the staff, Mr. Town Manager?
Nothing else other than to say that the applicants also have two members of their architectural team here.
Okay, thank you. So now the applicant has an opportunity to briefly present the application and or comment on the staff report, and can you please, thank you for being here. Can you please identify yourselves and anyone who's going to be presenting information to the council? And and Matt will unmute you.
Oh, Miriam, is that you?
Well, hey, Eric. Um, this is Miriam Rosenthal, Michael Phillips, and Eric Saul is our architect. Go ahead, Eric.
Sure. Basically, whatever everybody said is is what we're proposing. It's a nine foot deck. Actually, it's eight foot ten. It's a little bit short. And it runs the length of our garage structure, about twenty four feet long, and it meets all of the town's zoning regulations. So I don't really have much to say other than that. Like I said, like Mark Beal said at the county, he said, I'll read exactly what he wrote. I think it's it's good to hear what he specifically said. A balcony is a cantilever that has no supporting legs. A deck is not cantilevered and has legs under it to support it. I checked with the residential reviewers, and they all agreed this is the difference, and they do not have a definition in the IRC. Apparently, according to them, the only place a balcony is mentioned in the IRC is when they talk about cantilevers, which reinforces this thought even more. I also showed them all the picture or showed all of them the picture, and they all agree this is a deck. I hope this helps out. Let me know if you need anything else, Mark. So so he also got not just Mark, but a lot of the staff or all of the staff, he says, to agree. So that's it. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Have we seen this letter? As I read the package, it sounds like we have not received a copy of this letter. Have we not had a chance to evaluate or confer with the county?
It's item three point five in the in the Google Drive.
I I included in your Google Drive at its item three point five. It's a letter from Montgomery County defining as deck.
Okay.
Do I take time to read that, Mr. President, and then I'll come back to you?
I might, if I can perhaps have a moment back later then.
Okay, I'll come back to you.
Please proceed.
Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, actually. I don't think we're being asked to approve anything here. We're being asked to give our opinions on whether the proposed structure is a deck or a balcony. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, it it is on the agenda as a permit amendment. So you're.
But we can't approve it because it's got to go back to the county for approval because it's a change in the plan, and then we can't have a place show permit until the county has approved it. So we can't approve it until it comes back to us approved by the county, right?
Well, you could approve or disapprove the amendment. And if you approve the amendment, you could approve it with the condition that the town permit not be issued until the county permit has been obtained and presented to the town manager. We have done that in the past, I believe.
All right. I mean, I'll give my opinion. It it walks like a deck, it talks like a deck, it is a deck. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Is it, do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. You'll you'll be able to just, when you when you debate, you'll be able to add that comment. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
I do. I I'm looking at the pictures of of the the pictures of the drawing for the building. So I'm wondering. I don't, I don't know, Miriam, if you want to answer this, or Michael or Eric. The top structure that has a fence around it, what's that called? The roof, on the roof, it's got a fence around it. What's that called?
A roof deck?
Roof deck.
What you're asking about?
Yeah, I am. I just wonder, I don't know what it's called. So I'm just wondering what, I'm trying to figure out what a deck and a balcony are. Okay, the differences. So then if we go to the front of the house, there's another enclosure off of, it's probably a bedroom. What's that one called?
On the left side?
The left side.
Yeah, that's a roof deck as well.
That's a roof deck too, even though it's coming off the bedroom, it's not the roof?
Well, it's the roof. There's a underneath, there's a sunroom.
Okay, so that's a roof deck. So then, wait a minute, I lost my picture. Let's go to the the back of the house. And there's another, is that, what kind of deck is that one that's that's that that's like the whole side of the house, whole side of the back of the house?
Yeah, that's a regular deck.
That's a regular deck?
Yeah.
Okay, then what's the one that's on, looks like it's on the side of the house going down to the garden? What's that?
I'm sorry, I had it backwards. So this one, the one you're talking about down to the yard is a regular deck. You might have been talking about another roof deck. So the whole roof is a deck on this house, and then there's a a rear deck down to the yard. That's just a regular deck, but all the other upper decks are roof decks.
They're all decks. Everything in this house is a deck. There are no balconies. Is that right?
Correct.
Even though in my mind, they all look like balconies to me, but okay, that's right. That's what I I don't really understand. I don't really see a difference between a balcony and a deck. I know we're talking about the legs and the cantilevers and whatever, but to me, these all look like balconies. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
Thank you, Ms. Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me, by the way?
Yes, we can hear you.
I have a set of questions for Ron first. Ron, are balconies or decks defined in our code?
No, they are not.
Is there a definition of balconies or decks in the IRC?
I don't know the the answer to that. The IRC is International Residential Code, which has been adopted by the county under chapter eight of the county code, generally for safety and soundness issues, you know, how things should be constructed for for safety, not necessarily for zoning and setbacks, I would argue.
I'm I'm going to request you to read out our previous decision on this, but I'll come back to you while you pull that up. So we have it, we all hear exactly what we decided the last time related to this application, because I don't.
You mean the permit, the actual permit?
Yeah.
I don't have a copy of that. Matt, would you be able to email?
I'll come, I'll come back to you, Matt. I have a set of questions for Doug.
We'll have, we'll have, so Councilor Kumar, we'll have Matt read that after the question. Is it okay if it's?
That would be perfect. I just want all fellow council members also to just be reminded of what we, where we ended up.
We'll do that, we'll do that after all the council asks questions.
Doug, these are most likely yes or no questions. I I try to construct them easily that way. Okay, is this structure projecting from a wall, the proposed structure?
I'm sorry, can you say it one more time?
Is the proposed structure, is, yes. Can you hear me, Doug?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Is the proposed structure projecting from a wall?
Yes.
Is it projecting from an upper story?
Yes.
Is it roughly in the same location as the previously defined balcony from the earlier permit application?
According to the architect, it's the same location.
Is it attached to or accessible by windows or bay windows?
By what?
Is it attached to?
By what? I'm sorry.
Or windows or bay windows?
I believe there's a sliding door off the second floor to the structure.
Will it provide an overlook?
I don't understand that. Let's say it again, please.
Will this structure provide an overlook?
Yes.
Does it have some sort of a sort of enclosure or railings for safety?
It's got a glass railing at forty two inches high. I mean, it's glass wall, perimeter wall around three sides of the structure that's forty two inches high.
Great.
But it's made of glass.
Got it, got it. So I'll take that as a yes. And then I have a quick question for Eric. By the way, Eric, I really love the overall design of the house, which I believe we was, has been permitted. And it's exciting to see modern design in the neighborhood. I have a quick question on the sort of the, does this decision impact the overall timing of this project? What we are discussing today?
Yes, well, we didn't want.
The timing, the timing of the project.
The timing, meaning?
Yes.
Like construction?
Construction timing, yes.
Yeah, we would like to, we're, the contractor has already started, so we're doing foundation work now, and this needs a foundation done. We'd like to get that, all the foundation work done right away. So, yeah, so we'd like an answer right away so we can then get our foundation started.
Great, thank you. That's it for me, Jeffrey. If Matt can read the last decision, that would be great.
Okay, we'll have him do that after President Circo has questioned. Councilor Ravak, do you have any questions?
Um, my only question is, so the way that this deck is constructed right now, there aren't any variances that would be required for the permit. Is that right?
Is that a question to me?
Sure. Yeah, sorry.
You're correct. Yes, no variance. It's all within the zoning rules.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, have you been able to locate the decision? Can you, can you please read that into the record?
So there was a a permit decision issued as well. I mean, that's, I do have that. I mean, and that's three pages long. I don't know if you want me to read the whole decision. Is there something particular you wanted to reference from it?
Our decision on the on the variance, not, you know, specifically on the variance sought last time.
Maybe the the findings.
Because this is the fine, yeah, the details around that would be helpful.
That's a great question. Come on. Thank you.
So can you read the findings of fact if they're brief?
Sure, I can. I can go through and read them if you'd like.
Yes.
So the findings of fact, based upon the record in this matter, the town council makes the following findings. One, the applicant's lot is somewhat smaller than other lots in the town. The lot comprises eight thousand four hundred ninety four square feet. The lot width and side setback requires the applicants to build upward rather than outward in order to accomplish their goals. Two, among the purposes of the front setback requirement is the preservation of the character of the neighborhood, maintaining uniformity in the setback of houses from the street, protection of the streetscape, vistas and open spaces, and the flow of light and air. Three, the allowable exemptions from the setback requirements for certain projections, including balconies of a limited size, promotes the use of design elements that tend to break up the apparent mass bulk of structures. Four, a review of the application materials reveals that the balcony would materially materially impact views, sightlines, and the character of the neighborhood, given its proposed size and location, and the cumulative massing created by the three stories, a low-grade garage, which creates the perception of a fourth story, and the enclosed rooftop stairway, and a budding neighbor who would be one of the residents most directly impacted by the variance objects to the request. Five, the balcony is not reasonably necessary, given its width and the option of providing a roof instead. The need to build upward, as explained by Mr. Saul, does not create a need for the balcony. There is room to build rearward as reflected by the site plan. A rear addition is proposed. Conclusions, the strict application of the town code would not result in peculiar or unusual practical difficulties to the owners due to any exceptional condition of the property with respect to the proposed balcony. The balcony does not address any urgent need and is not necessary to overcome any unusual condition of the property. A roof is possible instead of the balcony. There is room to build rearward, and given the dimensions of the balcony and its location in relation to other building elements and the massing of the front facade, the variance would unduly interfere with light and air between residences or other structures and would be unduly incompatible with the scale, massing and character of the town and of nearby residences or other structures, and would otherwise unduly adversely affect the use, enjoyment or value of nearby properties. Accordingly, the variance described above is denied. The foregoing denial was opted by the town council of the Town of Somerset with the following members voting as follows. Steven Circo, President Debbie Heller and Kabir Kumar in support, Robin Barr and Shannon Ravak in opposition.
Is that, is that what you wanted?
Thank you.
That's number, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak to this application?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now, Council, are you prepared to make a motion? If not, I will turn it over to the Council President to lead the discussion of the application.
I would prefer that we have some discussion myself.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an interesting question for us to consider here. And I appreciate Kabir having us raise our language from our decision last month. What I propose here is, we should express some of our thoughts, maybe ask some questions, and we can hopefully come to a decision that a majority can support. From from my perspective, the council did not approve the structure last month because it was excessive. And it seems to me that the the architect has attempted to finesse some definitions to build an even larger structure that is, as he warned us he would do, at to to fit into another definition, but I believe that we have the authority to say that it was a balcony before and it's still a balcony, it's just a bigger balcony that has some supports on it. And I think if you were to look at the transcripts from last month, we'd we'd hear the architect saying exactly that. So I think it's still a balcony that we can and we can consider it as a balcony because it's elevated. It's a balcony, in my mind. Anybody else want to add some thoughts or questions?
Well, the only thing that I feel like it is different, I mean, the balcony that they wanted to put up originally had, you know, was kind of a closed wood thing that that this is, has a different look because it's all glass. And so it's like the air, the airwaves or, you know, like the air inside is not as hindered by the more closed-in balcony that was once up for debate last time, is my take on it. But, you know, I mean, I agree, it was well warned that, you know, this does fall under, you know, no needing a variance versus the the one foot extra from the balcony on the last meeting.
Whereas Shannon, I appreciate your your take on it with that there's now this glass, so it it just, you know, doesn't like close you out as much. But I agree, this is a balcony, and I think it's excessive. And I think it will be, you know, I I think it's, it it just takes away from the character of that block. I walked by the house today and looked at it, you know, and spent some time thinking about it, and I think it's a balcony. And so that's where I stand.
Some thoughts here. It's, we've heard those, those folks who know decks and balconies are telling us it's a deck. Now, however, the structure that is now proposed is clearly more disruptive of the neighbors' view than the prior balcony, and we had a complaint from a neighbor previously about the smaller structure. So that's a concern. Now, we do not need to approve this amendment tonight. We can wait until the county does approve the revised permit. Unfortunately, under current county rules, when a revised permit is approved, neighbors are not notified. In fact, neighbors are not notified when the revision goes in. So what I'd like us to do now is to require the owners to notify the neighbors of the change in plans and to have neighbors' comments available to the council when we approve the revised permit.
Yeah, I don't really agree with that, because it's still an intrusive, we're still looking at an intrusive, you know, a deck on front of the house or a balcony, whatever we're gonna call it. And I think we can make up our minds about this. We don't need to waste any more time of, of, you know, of Miriam and Michael's and the architects and the county and ours, you know, but I, I think we're there. I think we can make a decision on this tonight.
Well, I think we're, we're in a little bit of a jam, as presented by the architect, because we've been given evidence from a county official in the permitting department and with support from reviewers that they use, that the structure now proposed is a deck. We do not have a definition ourselves that would counter that advice. So to all extents and purposes, we have to see it as a deck. But we also have in our building code, when approving a permit, a clause which says if it's called, basically if it disrupts neighbors' enjoyment of the property, then it is a reason not to approve a permit. And so that's not to do with a variance, that is a reason not to approve a permit. So that's what I'm saying is, we need to hear from the neighbors again. Is this new structure going to disrupt their, interfere with their enjoyment of their views and their property? And then allow that to influence our vote on the permit when it comes back to us after county approval. That way, we are accepting the county definition of a deck, but we get to hear from the neighbors, we get to vote on whether it does satisfy our permit.
One question.
Rob, go ahead, Debbie.
A quick, it's a quick question to Ron. Do we have to accept the definition of the county?
No, you do not.
Okay.
I mean, the town code, many sections of the town code are based on the county code. So the county's interpretation is often helpful and persuasive, but it's not legally binding on the town.
Yeah, if I can contribute to this conversation, you know, unfortunately, we do not have this definition in our code. That's what I would tell our neighbors and the architect. We don't have this definition that would guide us.
And the county doesn't either, the county's.
And it turns out that, through reviewers, so this is an unfortunate circumstance. To, it, you know, in, in full intents and purposes, this is effectively the same structure, but deeper. And so the, you know, findings of facts, we had the last judgment, and the last decision, sorry, it sounded very biblical, the last decision are still hold, and if not, I think the, the depth makes it, you know, the sort of the added depth potentially raises additional concerns along similar lines. And so, you know, I'm, I'm leaning in the direction of what Council President Serko and Council Member Debbie Heller are saying, and and I think what, what's been useful about this, I may add, is that we probably do need to define these things in the code, and we need to improve this so we can serve our neighbors better moving forward.
Does anybody have any further questions or follow-up comments?
I hope we get a chance to rebut, right? We still get that chance?
No, 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 no.
We haven't had that chance, though.
You only have the chance to rebut the public comment. There, the council's now discussing.
This is absurd. This, this, this definition you guys are creating is.
Eric, Eric, you will, you will get a chance, you will get a chance. The answer is yes, just not yet, just not yet, yeah.
Mr. Town Attorney, could you please review the procedure?
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, the the council received additional information from the manager and from me. So I think it would be appropriate to afford rebuttal on those points.
At what, at which point?
Before the council closes the record and deliberates.
Right, right now, they're, right now, they're debating the application. So wouldn't they have to decide amongst them whether or not, do they need to decide? I don't think I can rule on that. I think they have to decide whether they want to accept rebuttal. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. And as President Serko indicated, that questions would be asked of council. I'm sorry, questions would be asked by the council members, and it would be appropriate, if you were to grant rebuttal, to wait till those questions are finished.
And, and, and any requests that the applicant has regarding rebuttal should be communicated in the chat to Matt, and that he can bring it, because this part of the hearing is now closed to the council only. So, so Sir, Eric, Mr. Eric, I think your last name is Saul, correct? So Mr. Saul, so, so apparently the council will entertain your request for rebuttal, and they will make a decision on that. And then if you have any other requests, please write directly to the town manager with your request. So I will turn it back to you, Mr. President.
All right, so if, if the council members agree with me, I think we should listen to any further information that the applicant cares to share at this time.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay.
Can I begin?
Yes, you've been okay.
First, I just want to say, this is definitely a deck. The fact that almost everybody at the county said it was a deck, these guys are professionals, design professionals in the industry, been doing this for many years, and yet, who on this council is an architect, engineer, worked at the county approving decks, balconies, please raise your hand. Does anybody, does anybody have any experience?
I am a professional engineer.
Well, okay.
Would not appreciate your comments.
No, the rebuttal is not a question.
Okay, fine, I'll rephrase.
The opportunity to question.
I'll rephrase. Okay, fine. I'm just saying, the fact that almost every, I should say every, because the email that came in said all people at the county looked at this, and they all said it was the deck, should say something. That has a lot of weight. I feel like you're punishing us for changing something that's in your code. Your code says nine feet is allowed for a deck. And it says three feet is allowed for a balcony. Why can't we change from a deck or from a balcony to a deck? That's like saying, well, you, you have a height limit of thirty-five, but we don't like what you did. You, you, we're gonna make yours twenty-five. That's not really fair. The intent of your code is a size, not a design character. You, you can't say, oh, it's modern, so we don't like it, or it's traditional, we don't like it. You're giving us a size in your code, and we're following that code. We've done that. This is a deck. It meets the nine-foot rule. You're setting a dangerous precedent by saying, well, I don't know, we're gonna just vote to say it's not a deck, because we don't like it. When you came in the first time, we didn't like it. We came in the first time with a variance. Had we come in with this design from day one, it would not have been a variance. And I believe you all would have approved this project the very first time. We're just being punished for our sins at the last meeting, because we changed something. That's not really fair, okay? Also, the last decision, based on blocking sunlight and whatever encroaching or some massive size, that's subjective, okay? I don't agree with that. I don't agree that a balcony that stuck out one more foot past the limit was creating so much blocking of sunlight. I mean, I would have been happy to create a model with shadows to show you that it didn't even touch the other building with shadows if we went out another five feet. So I, this just feels like we're being punished unfairly, and it's, it's a very, uh, dangerous precedent to call this balcony. I mean, that's just, I'm gonna say it's ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Mr. President, it's back to you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, my system froze up for a moment.
Oh, I said it's, it's back to you to continue the discussion towards a decision.
Okay, let's just go around, see if anybody has any thoughts or comments on the architect's observations or rebuttal. Just, let's, let's go in sort of reverse order. Shannon, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I think that, I mean, I, I, I kind of agree with him. I mean, I think that, that, you know, they came for the variance. They said what they were gonna do if they didn't get the variance. They didn't get the variance, and this is what they're gonna do, you know, and it does fall into our code. So, um, you know, I, I wish that it wasn't like this, but it does meet the standards of what our code has. That's my only thought.
Thank you. Debbie?
I still see it as a balcony, and I, I think we have a code for a reason. And I know we struggle with this all the time. How do we handle this when somebody wants something that doesn't fall within our code? But we have to make a decision as a council. Do we wanna follow the rules? Or do we wanna, you know, every time something comes to us, have to struggle through, through it? And I think in this case, I'm gonna take what Robin said, which you say earlier, Robin, if it looks like a duck and it is a duck, whatever. This is one of those, if it is a balcony, you said it was a deck. And I'm gonna say.
Deck rather than duck, by the principle, yeah.
Yeah, you got, you got, guys all got that. But I, I just think that we have standards, and they've encroached on the standards, and that's not fair to everybody else in the neighborhood. That's all. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Robin, since we have a duck comment?
All right, I mean, it's, it's why I said what I said previously. It, it, I think it is, the reasonable thing to do is to call it a deck, but it does not mean that we should then approve the permit now, because in fact, there is no need to approve the permit now. The county has not yet approved the revision. That opens up the opportunity for neighbors to comment. But because the county, when a revision is submitted, there's no need to contact neighbors according to the county. We need to put the requirement on the applicant to tell the neighbors how this has changed so that they can comment. And that is what I'd like us to do tonight.
Thank you, Robin. I'll go to Kabir just a little, but I do want to make one quick thought there. I greatly appreciate the sentiment, but in, in my experience, the town has, has never used the, the criteria about the enjoyment of neighbors.
There is a first time for everything.
Yeah, I'm just, that's true. Kabir?
Yeah, you know, I, I appreciate Eric's frustrations and Mariam's, Michael's frustrations. I think these things are frustrating. And you have a certain vision, and you want it to be realized, and I appreciate that. And I think to Eric's comment, you know, we, we, the whole sort of beauty of local government is that we don't need to be engineers. We are guided by the code. We're guided by sort of the findings of facts. We're guided by, you know, the, the sort of history of decision-making. And, and that's what I'm relying on here. And, and so I think that there's a lesson here that we do need to strengthen certain aspects of our code. And I think there's a lesson here, again, as I've mentioned to my fellow council members, we, we do need a process in which we create incentives, adherence to the code. So hope to come back to those conversations between all of us later.
Thank you, Kabir. Thank you, everyone, for your, your thoughtful comments. One, one additional, I guess, reference I'd like to share, as I've been doing a little bit of research, just as we've been having this discussion. Balcony is a type of a deck. So I, I think that it's appropriate for us to assess what type of deck we're looking at. And from my perspective, the, where the structure is coming out and, and our previous considerations of it means that it is, it's a balcony. That's the type of deck that it is. It's a balcony. For all intents and purposes. So with that, I, and, and I share Debbie's thoughts that, that we can make a decision on that, and we can just move on. So with that, I'm prepared to make a motion that that we consider the proposed building revision to be a balcony. Because that's the, that's the only question for us, is whether we consider it a balcony or a deck, as I recall.
Ron, is that?
It, it's on the agenda as a building permit amendment request. So I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to approve or disapprove the amendment request. Now, the, the town code provides that a modification is supposed to be submitted in writing to the mayor and town council, the applicable amendment fee paid, and then the written approval of the mayor and town councils required before the deviation or alteration is approved into the permit. I, I think, you know, we have discussed in the past whether the neighbor notification sheet needs to be resubmitted with an amendment request, and I think a prior council, you know, decided that should happen. But yeah, to, tonight, you can decide whether to approve or disapprove the requested amendment.
What, what was, was Council President Serko's amendment motion legally and technically sufficient?
Okay, then I'd like to do.
You're gonna rephrase it?
Then, then I would move that we, let me rephrase it. I move that we, that the council disapprove the amendment of the existing building permit granted to Miriam Rosenthal, the property located at fifty-five twenty-two Greystone Street, to add an eight-point-eight-foot overhang structure with classroom.
Okay, that's legally and technically sufficient, correct, mister? Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second? Councilor Kumar seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that, I believe that was Serko, Kumar, and Heller in favor, Roback and Barr opposed. Okay, thank you. We will now move to the next application. This is for forty-five.
Sue.
I'm sorry. For forty-five twenty-five Dorset Avenue. Today is November first, two thousand twenty-one. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for variance application twenty-one slash ten slash three to consider the building permit application, including variance requests from the front setback requirements of the Somerset Code for the property located at forty-five twenty-four Dorset Avenue, and submitted by Jeffrey Labe and Jill Caparale. For the property located at forty-five twenty-four Dorset Avenue and submitted by Jeffrey Labe and Jill Caparale. This hearing is being audited or recorded. We ask that all speakers speak up one at a time, addressing the council when called upon. And to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings. And submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Following that, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Following that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Following that, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions. Voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh the applicants first reached out to the town. Uh in June of twenty twenty-one and began preliminary discussions on the proposed. Building plans. Um the applicant received their final permit from Montgomery County. In September and um. Sub- submitted a completed application to the town in October eleventh of this year. Um before I turn it over to Doug, I would just like to point out. Um that in addition to the building permit that's being sought and the front setback variance. The applicant is also asking that the council consider an extended uh length of the permit that's granted. Um because of um delays in receiving uh materials. Um with that, I will turn it over to Doug for um more detailed report.
Uh the homeowners have submitted an application to make several improvements to the existing house. Improvements include adding a covered porch at the front of the house. Building an accessory dwelling unit in the basement with a ramp and in-ground steps on the right side of the house. Removing the existing deck and adding a screen porch at the rear of the house and replacing the old driveway apron. Uh the lot contains eight thousand four hundred eighty-seven square feet. And the proposed improvements, including the screen porch, will cover twenty-six point four percent of the lot. The EBL analysis indicated that the established building line from the front property line is twenty-nine point three feet. Survey indicated the front wall of the existing house is twenty-seven point seven feet, so it is a uh. Closer to the front property line than the established building line. The left side of the house is located seven point nine feet from the property line. And the right side is located eight point five feet from the property line. The highest proposed front porch and the screen porch at the rear both comply with the county R sixty code height requirements. The applicant will replace the existing driveway apron retaining the same shape and size as the existing location. The plan states that a maximum of three vehicles may be parked on the south side of Dorset Avenue. The applicant also includes a request for a permit for a dumpster and the driveway apron. The town code allows a porch and its roof to project a maximum of nine feet into the established building line. The maximum the proposed porch and roof can project into the established building line is twenty point three feet. Which is the uh EBL minus nine feet. The variance for the front porch and roof combined is is six point three feet. Uh the applicant is also requesting a variance for twelve month duration of the building permit. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Is um. That's that's the um. The staff report correct, Mr. Town Manager? That completes it?
Yeah, we also have our town arborist here. Um there are no trees that are being proposed to be removed. Um Tolbert does have a small tree protection plan for two trees in the front yard. Um to have fencing around them. I don't know if um I I think that covers it, but.
Dr. Feather, do you wish to say anything before we turn it over to the applicant?
Yeah, I did. Uh there's no, I I don't think this is gonna harm any trees in the front yard, so. Um and there is a tree protection plan to protect the ones that are there.
Okay, thank you. Uh now it's the applicant's opportunity to present. Their application and or comment on the staff reports. With the applicants, please identify themselves and all the persons that will be speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um my name is Jeff Lake. Been with me is my gorgeous wife Jill Caparelli at forty-five twenty-four Dorset Avenue. Um first, a big thank you to Matt and Doug over um over the past uh. Many weeks, uh just helping us understand the town code and the process. So a big thanks to them and uh. For their very comprehensive and accurate uh report out on our permit application. If Matt would be so kind to share a screen. I will. Can folks see that okay?
Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Great. I'm I have a a fair number of slides, but I'll walk through them very quickly. And please, members of the town council and others, feel free to ask questions along the way. Um. This is about getting ready for the next twenty-five years of our our time in Somerset and. Um what we'll do today is just give you a quick snapshot of who we are, what our motivation is for these renovations. Um go through the town permits, which will sound just like what Doug uh described. Um. Our proposal for decision criteria based on the code and other factors and really emphasizing um. The waiver request that's before you. Um the punchline, I'm not gonna read all of this, but. The punchline is, we're not a developer coming in and attempting to build a big house. We've been residents for twenty-six years. Um we are been part of this community. Our kids are part of this community. And bottom line, we're we're trying to figure out how we can remain in our home for as long as possible. We simply want to age in place. And have safe access to our home. Um so when we sat back and said, what are we trying to accomplish here? It's really facilitating our ability to stay in our home. Safely have handicap access to the main entrance to the main house as well as the basement. Um our accessory dwelling unit that the county has provided their initial approval of. Will be wholly contained within the basement. Frankly, it might be for one of our kids, we might rent it out. Uh part of the financial motivation, maybe this will resonate with you folks in later years too. Is our property taxes began at five thousand dollars a year. They're now nineteen thousand dollars a year. Um I'm retired, so I'm already on a fixed income. Joel will probably retire in a year or so. So we have to think financially about how we can manage to stay in this town. Another motivation is um addressing stormwater that frankly during rainstorms flows directly from Dorset Avenue into our property. And frankly, some of the other things that we're doing are just simply necessary repairs. I'd like to focus on this picture for a moment um. Because it really helps set the stage for the age in place question, the porch and the waiver request. So for the past twenty-five years, we haven't minded a whole lot getting out of the car and racing. To either the front door or the side door to get in in a rainstorm or a snowstorm. Um but as we look forward, uh that becomes more um problematic. We have another dilemma. Uh I call it Lake Somerset that, uh as you can see. Uh we have a small pond in our driveway. Makes for a great skating rink in the winter, but this is one of the motivations for having safe entry to our home. And also replacing the apron and the driveway. So I won't go through all this in detail because Doug said he did a great job of summarizing, but. Uh the scope of the project includes the accessory dwelling unit in the basement. A ramp and associated stairs for access uh into the ADU. The ramp. Together with the stairs provide a shortcut into the basement and the ramp provides the handicap access. The front covered porch, which I think is gonna be the particular item of interest for everyone. Um allows us to park one car partially under the porch when needed. So that the porch extends at least to the front door so we can get out and into the house. As I said, replace the apron driveway. Doug covered it well. Replace the deck, which is. The railings are falling off and we'd just like to make use of the space underneath the deck. Um which tends to be just disposed space for most of us who have decks. And there would be a new exterior heat pump and condenser. So the the building permits, HVAC, an actual building permit, driveway apron replacement, portable storage and dumpster, I think they're unlikely. Um but just in case, it's best to have the permit if needed. Um a wall which is simply a retaining wall that does not rise more than a foot. And most importantly, uh the front porch waiver, we do not have tree removal. Thank you, Dr. Feather. We will construct um. Protective fencing around the two trees. And we will not need a portable toilet. There's already a basement uh bathroom that the contractors will have access to. And we will not um have any problems with uh on-street parking, um in part because our good neighbor, our NBO at forty-six hundred. We're the caretaker for his house, so we use his driveway often. So that'll be, that'll be available to us. Um here is the timeline. The important thing to know is that we do have a county issued building permit. Um so to some of the criteria and and I is a former. Local, state, and federal regulator, I truly appreciate um. The need to respect the code, but also to recognize that there is a waiver process for a reason. And that our goal tonight, I think, is to strive to objectively apply those waiver criteria. I'll make some comments about the established building line. First and foremost, I understa- understand that the town EBL applies. I'll just give you a little more context for that EBL. Um there are exceptions. Porches, as you know, the this language is truncated, but directly from the. The code uh porches and the roofing may extend nine feet into a minimum setback and there are waiver provisions. I won't read every one of these, but the key is. They can be allowed. You may approve them or it doesn't unduly interfere with light, doesn't isn't unduly incompatible with scale. The massing of character of the town or the nearby residents would not unduly adversely affect the use enjoyment of nearby property. Um. Strict and literal application. Of the section can be considered if it creates peculiar and unusual practical difficulties. Our unusual practical difficulty is the goal of getting enough of the car underneath the porch. That you can get out of the front door and into the house without being rained or snowed on. And we think that what we've proposed is the minimum reasonable amount necessary to achieve that objective. So as you think about, and I'll show you a little bit more about what we've proposed. Um do we meet those waiver criteria? Is there an explicit compelling rationale for the waiver? Um is it reasonable and consistent with other houses? Has Montgomery County approved this? Is there neighbor support or neighbor dissent? And perhaps there are other considerations. I'm gonna now uh go to um. A PDF. Porch. So I'll start here and just simply say, hell, that's not the one I wanted to start with. Excuse me for a moment. So when we began this exercise with the architect, we said we want to be able. To have a porch structure at the front door of the car underneath the structure so we can get into the house. And his his first plan was frankly to build a very elaborate. Addition to the front porch and overhang so we could pull in the car, get out of the car. And make our way into the front door. And frankly, I think it was Michael Day. Who our neighbor who suggested, isn't there an easier way? And it's just simply forget all of this complex structure. Have a simple porch and replace this window with a door. So you get out of the car, go straight through the door instead of coming around either the side door that has no protection. Or through this.
I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, Jeff. I just wanted to let you know that we lost the screen share. So if you if you were trying to show. Show us a visual um of it, we're we're not seeing it.
Thank you. Let me try to go back to that real quick, cause you didn't see the explanation. Thanks, Matt. Can you see that now?
Mm-hmm.
Great. So just to recap, since you weren't watching the pointer, the architect originally had planned this massive. Addition to the front porch and a side overhang so we could get from the car underneath. Into the front door. This is the existing porch and he proposed to expand it directly. Our neighbor, I think it was Michael Day, who said, isn't there a simpler alternative? And that simpler alternative. It's not all this additional structure, just simply a simple porch and convert this existing window to a door. Much easier access right into the mudroom. Let me see if I can go back to the PowerPoint. Can you still see that? Oop, did it leave?
There you go. Try it again.
Okay, great. Obviously, when you change platforms, it drops the screen share. So. I'm hope, can you see the image to the bottom right?
Yes.
It is a porch structure at the Coleman's house on Fallstone. It's the same notional idea that is a porch that extends just far enough out that they have the ability. To pull the car in. And it's fascinating that Kat just wrote an article in the Town Journal about the importance of accessibility. And I've talked to Kat and John, and this is a classic example of how that accessibility can be achieved. So. On the top picture where you see the car, there is a tall stake. That would be the porch support and the small stake to the right would be the extent of the roof. And we're proposing to cut that back from two and a half feet to two feet. So you can see that what it achieves, the porch is just enough coverage over the car to allow us to get into the house safely. It's that window that you see on the left, which would be converted to a door. So to summarize, that that's our safe accessible um entry. For our age in place and um. Access to our home in a climate weather, we think it's the reasonable necessary, any shorter, and we would not be able to achieve that objective. And we do not think it would interfere with the light air or is incompatible with the scale. Just a few words on EBL. Um we recognize there are many different EBL methodologies. Um Somerset happens to have one that's more unique than the rest of the county. The county's is twenty-five feet. Can you see it? There's a a stake off to the right. In the, if you will, in the garden, that's the twenty-five foot county EBL. Of course, the existing house is at twenty-seven point seven, as Doug said. If you looked at the two immediately adjoining houses. And average them, the EBL would be twenty-seven point eight. A a tenth of a a foot shorter. And what's important there is that tells you that the two houses on either side of us. Are basically, when they were built seventy years ago, were built largely on the the same building line. But why is our EBL twenty-nine point three way behind the existing structure of the house? It's because you have to look out two hundred feet in either direction before. in either direction before you encounter houses that are set back further. This is just a function of when these houses were built, they weren't always, always built on the same building line. But nonetheless, as Doug so appropriately stated, the county approved this porch based on the 25-foot building line. Somerset's is 29, it's that difference that represents 6.3 feet, that represents the, the waiver that we're asking for. So you might ask, how does that compare to other structures in the town, just from an information standpoint? So I wanted to answer that myself. How, how would this look compared to other houses? What would the distance be from the porch to the street? And I'm using the street as the benchmark here, because it's the universal distance of measurement. So the edge of the porch roof would be at 33 feet, eight inches. The curb to the post, and you'll see why I'm measuring off posts, is 35.8 feet. So let's look at some other houses in Somerset. So in the upper, upper left is our house and the porch post is at 35.8, 35 feet, eight inches. And what you have here is a selection of other houses working across an existing house on Little Cumberland at 31 feet, six inches. So the entire house and porch is four feet closer to the street. The next one down on Lower Cumberland, 34,4. I'm sorry, I cannot, on my screen, I can't see the two, to the far right. Another one on Cumberland, I think.
You actually, you can, you can drag over the
Oh, you're so good. Thank you, Matt.
Thing.
Thank you. So working across, you can see a house at 36 feet, which is a mere four inches different. I think what's significant about the upper right and the lower left is this is the whole house that's at the same distance or even closer, as opposed to in our case, it's just a porch. The house for sale down on Warwick is at 36 feet, again, that's the entire structure, the entire porch. I think the next one's on Fallstone at 35,3. And I threw in this one on Cumberland at 27 feet. And that just helps understand that when that house was built, the house is probably 100 years old. And how our EBL does and does not necessarily take into consideration the unique aspects of what we face in the town. So back to, sort of back to the criteria as I see them. Does the waiver, does our waiver request of 6.3 feet meet the criteria for the town code? Would it not unduly interfere, unduly incompatible, or affect the use of nearby passengers or properties? Yes. Would it result in unusual practical difficulty for us if it's not approved? Well, less than 6.3 makes the porch unviable for our agent place goal. Is it reasonable and consistent with other Somerset homes? I submit to you it is. The county has approved it. Is there adjoining neighbor support? I can say I've spoken to Yogesh, I, I think, I just chose not to ask Yojet, Yojesh to, to write to you folks, but he offered to approach the council if needed to support. Michael Day, I believe, sent an email, Matt, to you, expressing his support.
Could you identify who those people are?
You are.
Please.
I would be happy to, Mr. Mayor. So the first person I mentioned is Yojesh, last name R A J K O T E A. He is at 5,800 deal. Michael Day wrote an email of support to Matt, and that's Michael Day of 5,801 deal.
Thank you very much.
Missy Rheingruber at 4,522 Dorset, I know her intent was to write an email of support. The fourth neighbor, our Nobio Freire at 4,600 Dorset is, presents a challenge because our Nobio has not lived here for the last 10 years. I'm the caretaker for his house, he resides in Florida. And in the last 10 years, I don't think he's been back more. And that is, that concludes our presentation. Thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you so much. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I especially appreciated some of the photographs you shared of other properties, just provide some context. I don't have any further questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions? You're muted, you're muted, sir.
Jeff, if you could clear up some confusion, I have, on the plans, it indicates that the porch is 16 feet from the street or the roof is 14 feet from the street. But you're saying that the porch post is 35 feet from the street. Why the difference?
So I, I think Doug can also confirm and apply this, the 16 or 14 feet is to the property line. And the 35 feet is to the street.
Okay.
Doug, do you, can you affirm that?
So yeah, the, the 14 feet is measured to the front property line. And I believe the applicant is measuring to the paved street surface.
When I tree, all right, and you applied the same standard to all of the homes that you looked at?
Yes, yes, and, and thank you, Robin, for asking. I, I put a laser measure. And this is why I did the distance to the post, because it's very difficult to do the edge of the roof structure. So I did a laser measure that is from the very base of the curb to the post, and that's accurate to 1/16th of an inch.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Haller, do you have any questions? You're muted, you're muted.
Hi, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, Jeff, um, if, if you don't get the waiver to do the porch, are you still gonna do the driveway? You're muted, Jeff.
You're muted, you're muted.
Thank you. Yes, we have to do the driveway, because in every rainstorm, water comes into doors, down door set onto our driveway and then between the Rhine, down this hill between the Rhine Grubers and our house, and it's causing ba- basement damage for us.
I can see why.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, every time they've raised the street, it's gotten worse and worse on our property. And it's bad enough when you're stepping into water, but you're stepping onto ice skating rink in the winter.
I've walked on your driveway, I know it. Another question, though, about the accessory unit. Um, what about parking for these guys? You know, I see it's a two-bedroom unit, right? So chances are you'll rent it to two AU students or something like that. Um, and they might have two cars. Are they parking in your driveway or are they parking on the street?
So they'll be parking in the driveway. We've committed to providing parking onsite, and you might ask, how are we going to do that first? As Doug said, replacement of the driveway would be to the same scale and size. And it can accommodate four cars.
So you'll tandem it, is that it?
Yes. Second, and thank you for asking that, Debbie, because I'll just make a note to Matt. There is a guy wire that obstructs part of our driveway and Pepco has agreed to move it to the property line. So Matt will be receiving a, a request from Pepco to do work in the right away at some point soon.
Sounds good. That's it, those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
No questions, Mr. Leap, very good presentation. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken, for a row back.
Um, I had a question going back to those two stakes that you had in, next to the car. So what were the, the differences between the smaller one that was closer to the street and the taller one?
So the taller stake would represent the support post of the porch. The small stake, two feet further out, would be the edge of the roof of the porch.
Okay, and is the porch on going, like, is the six, the six-foot variance that you're seeking, is that only just on that part of the house that just juts out? Like, how does the line fall for the rest of the porch, like, in the part of the house that doesn't jut out like that?
So the six-foot variance would only apply to the porch structure and the width of that part of the house. The remainder of the house is set back.
And so the six feet, or would you need a variance to continue that porch, you know, like kind of across the front of your house? You wouldn't, it's only for that one part where the house is?
If we had, if we had kept the initial design that expanded the front porch, we would have been asking for an additional variance, because that would have extended past the existing building line. So we saw this as a win-win in the sense that a simpler, smaller design required less construction and cost, but also obviated the need for other aspects of a variance.
Okay, thanks, nothing, I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to testify in this hearing?
No, other than what Mr. Leap had, had said before, that we, we did receive one letter from, from Michael Day, who is the neighbor on Deal, I'm sorry.
Right on Deal.
On, on on a 5,801 Deal place, who wrote in that he supported the application.
Okay, thank you.
And so are you If I may, I did reach out to all four applicants.
Okay.
It was very explicit.
Thank you, thank you, we have that information. Ca- Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yeah. Who you want to discuss first? Okay, if you want.
Well, well, usually, I, I mean, I, I think there's possibly consensus already, so Robin, do you wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the various requests on the permit.
Second.
So Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient? Does he need more language in the
The, the motion is sufficient, but it would be helpful to have some discussion indicating the findings that the council is making.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Now is your opportunity. Perhaps the town attorney can suggest the extent of the findings that are necessary.
So under the, the town code, the council can make alternative findings. One, or A, the council needs to find that, and let me refer to the code. That the proposed construction would not unduly interfere with light and air between residences or other structures, would not be unduly incompatible with the scale, massing and character of the town or of nearby residences or other structures, and would otherwise not unduly adversely affect the use enjoyment or value of nearby properties. Or alternatively, the council can find that the strict and literal application of the code would result in peculiar or unusual practical difficulties to the owner due to extraordinary situations or conditions peculiar to the property. So then the council needs to find that if there are such situations or conditions, that what's proposed is the minimum reasonably necessary to overcome those situations or conditions.
So, so Councilor Barr, since you made the motion, do you wish to add?
Yeah, I'll add that, 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 so this is a minimalist design and it does not interfere with the light and air of the neighbors and the neighborhood noticeably. It does not obstruct views of neighbors because of the design. It does have some minimal intrusion into the, towards the street, so visually it does stand out. But I see that as minimum necessary in order to accomplish what are reasonable goals of the owners, which are to provide some cover for them to enter their own home.
So Mr. Town Attorney, is that enough information to be added to the, to the decision?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, counsel, so there is a motion that has been seconded with additional findings that have been suggested by the maker of the motion. Is there further discussion on the motion?
I would just like to say one thing, can I?
Of course.
Am I muted? Okay.
You are.
I am, I, I find this, um, this variance appeal very compelling for lots of good reasons. I only worry about one thing, I worry about the precedent, you know, um, is this, how are we gonna hand, handle these in the future? You know, where does this fit in? I, I just worry about someone saying that you gave it to them, but you won't give it to us. And maybe it's a larger question for us as a council to take a look at our code. You know, to maybe that's what we need to do at another time. But this is just what I worry about, but I, I, it's compelling, you know, without a doubt. So that's just my question to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
If, wait, sorry, if I can, was I muted? Um, so I, I, I appreciate that the, um, the residents have, have, have strove, have, have aimed for a modest partial roof carport access. But I wonder if, if they had, for example, considered flipping the design, moving the driveway to the other side of the house, which is set back further. They could have then had a carport extending that would not have required extension into the EBL, then they could have access to their patio. I'm just, it seems like maybe there's some other options, I'm not sure if this was the only way to go.
I, I, I think that that's a question you should have, it would have been best to ask.
I should have.
But at this point, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I see Barr, Heller and Rovak, all those opposed. I see Circo, did you? Councilor Kumar, did you vote?
I did, in favor.
Okay, so it was four to one. Thank you very much, everyone. We will now move to the building administrators' report. Mr. Lomar.
Doug, are you
You're muted, you're muted.
Are you still there, because you're muted?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, okay. At 4,501, we did receive an application on Friday for the building permit for the two houses. The demolition of the existing house and the new house at 4,501 and also at 4,503 on Cumberland's. Uh, so we're reviewing that application now and we'll have some comments later. At 4,505 Greystone, the applicant has submitted an uh, the applicant has submitted an application to make exterior vision to the existing house. That demolition of that uh house has begun. And at uh fifty-five sixteen Trench Street and also at forty-seven twenty-three Fallstone. It appears the work is done, but the county has not signed up on their permits yet, so those two permits are still open until the county signs off. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Counsel President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
None. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rovak.
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, uh, Mr. Lomar. The next item is public hearing motion to approve of the fall tree planting list as recommended by the Town Arborists and the Parks and Natural Resources Committee. Dr. Feather.
Uh, thank you, Jeffrey. Um, we have seventeen trees we're going to plant throughout the town. I have uh four of them actually, or five of them in the parks, because we took quite a few trees down um this uh summer and fall in the parks. Um, and the uh Parks and Natural Resources Committee have looked these over and approved them. I only made one change. At forty-seven oh four Essex, the resident requested a sugar maple rather than a willow oak, and I agreed and um also the uh committee agreed to that, too. Um, I've sent these out for bid to Stadler Nursery and should receive uh pricing probably mid or or the end of this week. And um I'm up for questions if anybody wants to.
Very much. Counsel President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
No questions. Don't say the Walters at forty-seven oh four Essex really do appreciate the speed with which you uh resolved their concern over the willow oak.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Heller.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar. Thank you, Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there, has any resident or guest guest indicated a desire to speak on this? Nope. Okay, thank you. Counsel, you're prepared to make a motion?
I motion to approve the fall tree, the fall tree prompting list as recommended by the Town Arborist and the Parks and Natural.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? I see Heller. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Counselor Heller, did you vote in favor?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you. It passed unanimously. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a contract with Fair and Peers to conduct a safety study at the Somerset Pool Parking Lot in an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, and we are joined by um the prospective contractor this evening, so thank you, Um, Anjali for joining us. Um. I'll keep it relatively brief. This has been a discussion that's happened a couple of times, I think, over the past probably eighteen months or so to look at um and sort of ensure that we're following safe uh, you know, safe practices in the parking lot of the pool. The pool committee, as well as a few residents in town, have at one point or another emailed our office, um spoken at council meetings or spoken individually to council members about some concerns uh specifically as it relates to children who are walking in the pool parking lot and how basically people that are driving there and I and specifically leaving the parking lot have to back up and that there there may be a concern of a blind spot and just getting a professional set of eyes on it and um making sure that we have kind of the best setup and so I I had reached out to a few different engineering firms of of uh in twenty twenty, actually. And at that time, and then again, when I did this year, uh Fair and Peers gave a a really good and fair proposal on it. And um one of the things that I liked in, as I talked to them and talked to some of their references, um is that they prioritize kind of common sense approach and smaller scale projects as opposed to really large infrastructure overhauls. And um we're fortunate enough that Anjali, who is, who would be our um our our contact for this project, specializes in smaller projects of this size in parking as well. Um. So I I I would recommend to the council that we approve of the contract. I am going to turn it over to Anjali um in case she has anything that she'd like to add or some thoughts about maybe anything that she's observed to this point.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work on this, Mr. Town Manager. Go go ahead, Ms. Tapia. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate it.
Yeah, happy to be here. Um, so again, my name is Anjali Tapia, and I'm with Fair and Peers. I've been a practicing civil engineer for about ten years now. Um, I'm a graduate of the University of Maryland and grew up right here in Silver Springs, so I'm really familiar with the area. Um, and Fair and Peers as a company is uh predominantly on the West Coast, but um has been serving the region since twenty fifteen, and we have a strong history of serving kind of small city and townships in exactly this type of matter. Um, we are well represented in um industry um associations and kind of uh that technical research to be able to combine all that information and bring kind of the most um up-to-date practices to to the project. Um, and really looking for kind of practical uh tactile solutions that that will help address some of the issues here.
Thank you very much. Counsel President Circa, do you have any questions?
Um, ju- just want to notice that, first off, thank you very much for the proposal and engaging with our town manager. Um, the proposal includes two hours of site observations, and I'm just curious if if I guess how practical it is, too practical it is to do those site observations during the off-season when we're not going to have cars and kids going to the swimming pool. Is is that possible, or do we have to like change the schedule to give you a little bit more time?
I don't think we need to change the schedule. Actually, um uh Matthew and I are scheduled to meet up uh later this week to to get to start some of those observations. Um, and we felt pretty confident that um kind of schedule being a concern and wanting to have potential solutions in place ahead of the next season um that we could meet on-site and talk through some of the issues, and if need be, talk to a couple of other stakeholders that would give us a good sense of of what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I I'm, first of all, this council member consists, believes the current parking spot layout and pedestrian pathway are dangerous. Um, and so I I am looking for ways to make it less dangerous, and I hope that you can help us there. Uh, the other point is, do you consider landscaping solutions as part of your um tools that you use and recommendations?
Yeah, we're we're not landscape architects by any means, but we are, we do work with them quite frequently and are familiar with some of the um kind of low-hanging fruit solutions that what, you know, looking at site distance and um kind of different alternatives that that might be um possible.
Yeah, there may be some low-hanging fruit there.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
Uh, no more of a comment that, you know, I know it'd be, this would be best done if we could have done it already, if you could have had your site visit already. But I think there are enough of us around, if, you know, to be called on, to draw you a picture, really, you know, uh about how it works and why it's, why we see it as dangerous. But we would like it done by next spring, for sure. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
Uh, no questions for Anjali. Anjali, thank you for making time being here. Um, quick question for Matt. This is recommended by the pool committee, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rovak. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to testify on this item?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve a contract with Fair and Peers who conduct a safety study at the Somerset Pool Parking Lot in an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I can't.
I saw Barr first. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. I believe it was unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, um, Ms. Tapia for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
And I know, I know you'll give us excellent service. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of the formation and charter of a revenue committee and might nomination of Nick Fox of Cumberland Avenue as committee chair. So I'll turn this over to both the town manager and Councilmember Kumar, whose idea this was. I'll let Councilmember, I'll let the town manager frame it, and then you can turn it over to the council member.
Yeah, I I don't want to steal uh Councilmember Kumar's thunder, but uh let's see. I I believe that the council considered this at the September work session and kind of worked through several different variations of how the first iteration of this committee would work, and this is what we've landed on and uh already have started to gather a couple of ideas and um potential things to look at, but other than that, I I'll turn it over to you, Kabir.
The only thing I would add is for, this is just to jog our collective memories. We decided the last working session that we would update the draft charter to include, you know, the recommendation from Mayor Slaven that this committee could then potentially recommend a longer-term Ways and Means Committee. Uh, we've also updated the charter to say that this, it's focused on alternative revenue, but it would look at all the full revenue picture, long-term revenue outlook. Um, and and I'm excited that uh thanks to to Mayor Slaven's um uh support, and uh we have a a town resident who is going to be uh raised his hand to be committee chair and is excited to drive this, try this forward.
And we will move, we will move forward uh this month in uh recruiting members for the committee and and of course, I I know that Councilor Kumar was very anxious to get the work going, so um we we will act expeditionally.
Yeah, and one other thing I would quickly add, uh, you know, in one of our meetings, I think it was Council President Circa who suggested the idea of can we sell chopped wood from the trees that we maintain? So which all of us thought, that's an interesting idea for potentially revenue. There might be others. So any ideas you have that you have reviewed, Councilmember Barr has wrote earlier in the summer a town journal article on some ideas. All of those will, I I'm quite confident will feed into this process.
Well, well, you might want to write an article in this month's journal about it.
I'll do that.
Because um, as everyone knows, it's not only committee members that have input into the work of a committee.
That's right.
So anybody that's interested can participate, whether they're on the committee or not. And thank you so much. Counsel President uh Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions. Just comment. Thank you very much, Kabir, for spearheading this effort.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak?
Yes, there actually was one comment uh from Kumar Vaswani.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Vaswani, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I just have two suggestions for this. Uh. Next last paragraph says, at least one member of the committee shall complete the online training for the Open Meetings Act. I would suggest changing that to say the chair should take the training because it does you no good if the member who takes it isn't active in the committee or is absent for some reason. And then second, the last paragraph refers to the town's document retention schedule. And I suggest that the town make that available to the residents and the public by posting it on your website so we can see it. And secondly, regarding that, I think you should change that to say the chair shall make certain records are retained in accordance therewith rather than the members, because the members of the committee don't have any ability to file records in the town's filing system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure the the council will consider those recommendations. Is there uh further testimony from any resident or guest?
No other comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are you prepared? Councilor Kumar, are you prepared to make a motion?
I motion to approve the formation and charter for revenue committee and Mayor Slaven's nomination of Nick Fox from Cumberland Avenue as committee chair.
Well, second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Uh, so sorry, just just before we we vote. I just wanted to thank Kumar Vaswani for his comments. I think we should consider those as we look at sort of updating our standard format for charter.
Say, I I'm sorry, I should have responded to that. Um, so as you know, we are in the process of of formalizing the committee protocols. And and that is going to be presented at to the council at the work session, I believe. Hopefully this month. And I think all the ideas that he had will be under consideration and can be uh adopted for all committees, not just this one committee. So so I think that that's, I think that's excellent input that I hope the council will consider. We actually might write that into our proposals that you will consider. And and then the the issue that he had about the document retention, that will be coming forward when the History and Archives Committee proposes a document retention policy. And then the idea about the website, that will be uh given to the vendor so that when the, when the new website is created, that that will be uh a possibility. So all the things he talks about is excellent, but I don't think, I don't recommend that you adopt any of that tonight because it requires more discussion and consideration.
Right.
But they're all excellent ideas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
So be, and I I'm sorry to, I should have uh, I'm I'm, I was trying to rush everybody along. I should have brought that up. So are there any further, are there uh further comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Thank you very much. The next item is public hearing motion to adopt ordinance number six twenty-one-one, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to require a stormwater drainage plan for new construction projects, to add stormwater drainage plan requirements, to add to the statement of intents and purposes, to add definitions, to require a pre-permit informational meeting, and to apply the existing variance procedures to the new stormwater drainage plan requirements. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, um, we have introduced and reintroduced this uh ordinance, and it is now ready for adoption. I will note that we have two members of our esteemed committee joining us this evening, including Chair Global Car. Um. This ordinance establishes certain uh stormwater-related regulations for uh town permit review. Um, and with that, uh, I would be happy to turn it over to um.
Let's see if the chair, let's see. Madam Chair, thank you for joining us tonight, and I think there's an uh Mr. Schwartz, distinguished member is here. Madam Chair, before the council asks questions about this, would you, do you care to um make any comments?
Um, sure. I I think the committee feels that this is a a very strong proposal, and um we support it. we support it and hope that it will be enacted.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you for the efforts of the Stormwater Study Committee.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
But thank, thank you to the Stormwater Committee for doing this work and, and, and giving us the, the basis for this code change. It is a strong beginning, but it's not the end. So there is more work to do. One, one other point is that we did modify the version slightly at the introduction, Matt. And so do you, have you posted the version that Ron sent today, which was the?
Ye- yes, thank you for reminding me. I ha, I have updated that with the, the updated version from, from Ron, which had some, some modest changes to it.
Right, thanks. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any?
I don't have any questions. Just a real thanks for a great piece of work. I hope we can take it to the next level as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Again, my thanks too to Ellen and Ed and the entire Stormwater Committee and to Councilmember Barr for work on this. And as he mentioned, we have, we have various things in the pipeline and I'm excited that we are strengthening the code along these lines.
And Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
No questions, but I think that this is a great first step, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak, testify on this agenda item?
Yes, Mr. Vaswani has raised his hand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's a good beginning also. And I just want to point out that the so-called one-year storm event that referred, is referred to, it's happening like every three months now, it seems. And so I hope you'll strengthen it in the future. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else indicate they wish to speak?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. We I'm move that we approve adopting a change to ordinance 6211, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to require a stormwater drainage plan for new construction projects, to add stormwater drainage plan requirements, to add the statement of intents and purposes, to add definitions, require a pre-permit informational meeting, and to apply the existing variance procedures to new stormwater drainage plan requirements.
Second, is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. So that passed unanimously. Thank you. I note now that we are more than 20 minutes ahead of schedule. So I would suggest that we move to item number, it's not numbered, but the introduction of the ordinance on the, the one that's listed for 10, I don't know why we didn't number these this month. I'm sorry. The, the item that's scheduled for 10:05 to introduce the ordinance 10211, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to remove the sledding hill designation on Cumberland Avenue as recommended by the Town Public Safety Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
This has been a, a topic that's been discussed several times over the years. The Town Public Safety Committee voted that the specific designation of Cumberland Avenue as a sledding hill be removed from the code, in part because right now, the way the code is written, technically, the mayor or myself are not allowed to have that street be plowed after a significant storm. And so I think the committee was going to possibly look at maybe an alternative place that's not in the middle of the road for kind of a makeup sledding hill space, understanding that it is a bit of a tradition that that could potentially be lost, but that ultimately so, sort of a better safe than sorry instance with regards to people sledding in the street.
Okay, thank you. And just to remind every, the council and also the the public that is listening, that this tonight is merely an introduction to set the ball rolling on this topic. So, and, and it requires a vote, it requires three members to vote in favor of the introduction. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
No questions. I mean, I appreciate the intent of the Public Safety Committee to look for an alternative to it, but we, I mean, we really can't continue to have a road closed during a major snowstorm. Obviously, emergency services need, need to be able to reach people and they can't reach people. Road is not plowed.
Just, just to be, be, to correct, I'm sorry to correct you, but the road is not closed. That's one of the problems.
Okay, well, it's not plowed. It's.
It's not plowed. So it's, it's creating, it's creating a dangerous situation by inviting young children to sled down the hill that is not closed.
Right.
Did you have any other, did you have any other questions? Councilor Barr, did you have any other questions? Thank you. Councilor Heller.
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
One question for the town manager and for you, Mayor Slavin. Will you explore ways to keep, not specifically that tradition alive, but to create options for you know, sledding in, in, in the town or work with the residents who might be keen on keeping that tradition alive? Are you mentioning that?
I think it would be up to, I think that when this is considered by the council, I think that the council can give direction to me and the town manager on what you would like us to do.
Yeah, I was just picking up something Matt said, that it's a tradition. And so I, 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 just, just to be clear, I don't have a question, but I, I'm in support of cleaning the code and removing things that don't allow us to plow streets. And, but at the same time, I appreciate it's a tradition. And if there's a way for us to find outside of the code, ways to keep it alive, I would encourage that.
I do, I do think that one of the considerations that's always existed all along is that that there are, there are other and better sledding hills in the vicinity that are already currently being used.
Agreed, agreed.
So you know, this has been a debate that has gone on for 20 years.
Well, we'll, we'll be putting a rest to it. I like that.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion to introduce this amendment to the code?
Sure. I move to introduce ordinance 10-21-1 to amend the code of ordinances to remove a sledding hill designation Cumberland Avenue as recommended by the Town Public Safety Committee.
Okay, is there a second? I see Heller. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so at this point, we need to assign someone, or it could be the staff, to write an article for the journal. Does anyone wish to write it or, or the, the staff will, will write it? Okay, I take it that we're going to have the staff write it. And of course, there will be, of, of course, at the next work session, the council will decide when to put this on a council agenda. So thank you very much and thank you for all your hard work on that. In addition to, I, I also belatedly want to congratulate you on passing the stormwater management ordinance because you thoroughly understood the legislative process and it worked beautifully. And you all should take the credit for that. Thank you, along with the committee. The next item, public hearing motion to adopt ordinance number 10214, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to prohibit the use of gas power blowers on or after September 1st, 2022, as recommended by the Town Environment Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, this is another ordinance that we had introduced previously and actually had adopted previously. The, the, the current version of this ordinance that exists would prohibit the use of the leaf blowers beginning calendar year 2023. And so this effectively moves it back three months to capture that leaf collection season in fall of 2022. I, I think that's probably enough background, but happy to answer questions.
Yes, thank you very much. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak on this agenda item?
Not at this time, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'll move the motion. All right, we will amend the existing ordinance which establishes a start date of January the first, 2023. So it's to adopt ordinance number 10214, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to prohibit the use of gas power blowers on or after September 1st, 2022 now, as recommended by the Town Environment Committee.
Is there a second? I see Councilor Kumar. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. I think everyone voted in favor. Thank you. Okay, so I note that we are, that we are again in advance of our agenda. So why don't we begin the town manager's report? And we will break at, we will break away from that at, in 10 minutes. Sure. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. So as, as you all are aware and know, I was gone for a significant chunk of this month. So I, I wanted to make sure to say publicly and for the record, a, a very well-deserved thank you to Linda for covering town operations and doing the work of multiple people for, for a couple of weeks. I, I, I appreciate very much that, that she gave me the opportunity to, to, to celebrate my wedding and, and honeymoon. And doubly so the fact that there were no fires to really come back to. So I'm very, very, very grateful.
Except you had 2,000 emails to answer.
There was a lot of, there was a lot of emails to go, go, go through. That's, that's true. But I, I also wanted to say thank you as well to, to Mayor Slavin, who I know put in some extra time in the office as well. To Ron, who helped cover and Doug, who's no longer in the meeting tonight, but also would be remiss to not mention them. And as well to, to the council who kept, kept plugging away and got, got quite a bit accomplished, in fact, while I was gone. So proud, proud to work, work, work with and for you all and appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, to step away for, for a little bit. I kind of did my report a little bit differently this month, in part because I, I, I was gone, but wanted to highlight, you know, some of the, some of the things that we have cooking right now. On one that I think in the next couple of days will probably really start to heat up in terms of day-to-day interaction is our audit will, will really start. So we've begun engaging with the auditors. They have a, they have all of our final financial reports from the previous fiscal year. And we'll soon be asking for rent, samplings and things like that. And there's a couple of sections of the report that I'll have to do, of the actual audit that I'll have to do, the actual report on. We have an audit committee as well, so keep them engaged in the process as well. And allow them to review the audit and make a recommendation to you all as well. And there's another, there's kind of two large i- i- I don't know if issues is the right word, but two large items, I, I suppose that one is countywide, the Thrive 2020, that we're, we're working to hold a forum to consider taking a unified stance and perhaps consider other other action on this item. And I know, I know so, a, a lot of the discussion has been specific to the ZTAs that have been proposed by Councilmember Wiljewando in particular. So Mayor Slavin and I have had some discussions and are, are, are planning to hopefully hold the forum where more of these views can be discussed, get a better understanding of them and provide an opportunity for the council to to take a stance if that's the direction that you want to go. And then similarly, we have the American Rescue Plan Act. I'll work with Mayor and Ron and some folks at the Maryland Municipal League to be able to give you all an update on where we stand, what our options are. And I know previous discussions at the coun, council level has been about town forums as well, to get an understanding of how we want to prioritize the myriad of worthy and worthwhile projects that we could potentially use this money for, especially given that the way that the calendar years fell and the tax revenues came in. We, well, it looks like we're going to have an opportunity to use that money to recoup lost revenue, which gives us a lot more flexibility than most of our, our neighboring communities, which are a little bit more handcuffed in, in terms of specific projects that they can use that money for. I also wanted to, this actually came up this evening, this archiving and records retention project. So in early October, we did submit a draft schedule to the Maryland State Archives and are just waiting, slowly working its way up the ladder there until it finally gets to the actual state archivist. So I, I suspect any day now, we should get an answer on that of any small tweaks we need to make or to move forward with next steps, which would be pickup of documents and scanning of some of our precious documents, including minutes going back towards the inception of the town. And actually sat in on a very productive and very nice meeting of the History and Archives Committee today, who have some other documents that they'd like to go through that don't specifically fit our records retention in terms of having administrative value that we need to keep in that way, but that may have historical value for future projects that they'll work on. Another issue that came up while I was out is the, the pickleball presentation and Mayor and I are meeting with Bruce Charandoff, Charandoff, who has been spearheading the, the pickleball issue to consider next steps to, to get in front of you all for consideration, possibly at the November work session. And speaking of the November work session, you all should have received a doodle poll invite. I know I've gotten a response from some, but not all of you. I don't know if now's a good time to try to lock it in. It looked like maybe we did. It looked like maybe we did.
Why don't we? Why don't we do that? And then we'll go right to the to the next agenda item?
Okay, well, based on based on the responses that we've gotten so far, it looks like maybe seven o'clock on November fifteenth is the most amenable time for folks. Is that possible? Is it possible to put that on the agenda?
Does that does that work for everybody?
Looks for me.
Yeah, it's fine for me.
Heller, Kumar, Barr.
Seven P M. On November fifteenth?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that works.
Okay, so that.
Cool. All right.
That's what it shall be.
Excellent. So I will send out an invite for that, but otherwise, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to keep them in the meeting.
Yes, because we are now we are we are now able to call the item, Public Hearing Motion to Adopt Ordinance nine twenty-one one and Ordinance to Amend the Code of Ordinances to Require a Permit for a Food Truck Operating Within a Town Park. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, before I turn it over to Councilmember Heller, this was introduced previously and Councilmembers Heller and Rovak worked together with the town attorney to craft a piece of legislation that just ensures that we don't get inundated with requests for food trucks and that we're able to properly schedule them and have a have a real process in place to approve them.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Heller. Do you wish to further?
No, I read it. It looks good. I I think the food trucks have become extremely popular. And I'm glad we have something official that we can point to to make sure we're doing the right thing and we get food trucks in here that have licenses and things like that. So thank you, Ron, because I I read it. It looked really good.
Okay, thank you, Council President Circo. Do you have any questions?
No questions. I'm glad we've moved ahead on this.
Thank you, Councilor Barr. Do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you for putting it together.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Just thanks to Councilmember Heller and Rovak and Ron for moving this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Rovak.
No questions, but thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Has any resident or guest indicated they wish to comment or testify?
Nope, not this time.
Thank you, Council. Are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes. Should I try to do that?
Yes, please do. And then the town attorney can amend, can help you amend it if necessary.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt ordinance nine dash twenty-one dash one to amend the code of ordinances to require a permit for food trucks operating within a town park.
Second.
Thank you.
Miss, I assume Mr. Town Attorney that that's legally intact. Okay, thank you. And I see that Councilmember Rovak seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Okay, again, I want to congratulate this council for moving that forward, using our beautiful legislative process and making a needed change that will really help improve the quality of life of our of our residents. So we are still running a little bit ahead. So I I wanted to take this opportunity to elaborate a little bit on what the town manager was saying about two items. First, regarding Thrive, as you recall, we we had originally scheduled a meeting of the council to take a joint position on Thrive two thousand and fifty. And because we made a an error on the announcement, the the meeting was postponed. And so at this time, we are, I believe the town manager is calling the council to come up with it with the date and time where the council will take, consider taking a position on Thrive in a joint way. So do we wish to, I'm sorry to join. So do do we want to take this opportunity now to try to schedule that?
Uh, well, what I was going to say is because of people's schedules, it looks like our our best plan of attack on that was to do it at the front of the council work session. And so the times that I sent out added in an extra fifteen minutes to the front end of it to have the thrive discussion before we move into a work session.
And is that going to be enough time, Council, do you think? Because that will be
that will not be enough time.
Because because remember, this needs to be a a council meeting that would would have a public hearing. I believe what I was hearing from council members is that you wanted to have a public hearing element to this.
Yeah, could we do it on the tenth as a separate session? If others are open to it.
And?
On Wednesday, the tenth? Is every would would every? I think that the request from the council was that this would be a tight one hour at the most meeting. Okay, so is is everybody available on Wednesday, the tenth at its whatever time works for everybody? Does that work for Heller and Rovak and Circo and Barr and and Kumar?
I don't think it works for me.
And is there any time? It doesn't have to be in the evening.
Is there a better time that day or earlier that week for you?
Tuesday, the ninth or Monday, the eighth would work.
Tuesday is really hard for me, not unless it's in the middle of the day. I volunteer.
What about Monday, the eighth?
I can do Monday, the eighth.
Does that, Mr. President, does that work for you?
Yes, thank you very much.
Does it work for everyone? And what time do you want it? Five, six, seven?
Seven P M. Seven.
Does seven P M. Work for everybody on November the eighth?
Yes.
Okay, and and so what what we will, what we will make sure that you all have are all of the I think we've sent you almost all of the requests from the coalition. There was another letter that I got this week from the distinguished activist Jenny Sue Dunner regarding the impact of Thrive on River Road. Did you? I think you all got that. So we will make sure and we will publicize this so that there'll be maximum opportunity for public input. Okay.
So one thing, one quick thing on that front, I will circulate as we discussed in the last working session, sort of a draft that is the beginnings of what could be.
Correct. You were going to draft a.
I have I have drafted it. I I last week's discussions in town were helpful. Debbie has also sent me materials and been available to be an advisor on it. And so I will have a I'll have a rough draft for us as a starting point. We may, we don't have to go with it, but it'll just trigger our line of thinking.
Okay, excellent. So the other item that I wanted to elaborate on was the issue of the ARPA funding. And and I know that, you know, Matt had to catch up on a lot of stuff. And so I wanted to clarify for for him what the council requested at the work session is that first, there will be a briefing of the council on the ARPA funds that would be you and perhaps someone from M M L and and of course, our town attorney. And then at and then at that meeting, the council had decided that they would then decide how many public forums would be would be necessary on 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 these items. And as you all know, we're getting we're getting, we forwarded you requests that we've gotten from all the different advocates advocates in the town for, as you know, for some for pickleball to give to nonprofits, for stormwater management and on and on, lights. But one thing I wanted to say is that regarding the stormwater management, I attended a session, I believe it was with the National League of Cities or U S Conference of Mayors on stormwater management. And besides ARPA, besides using the ARPA funds, there is also, there are also some other programs that are separate from ARPA that we might be able to apply for federal programs that deal, help us deal with stormwater management and specific projects. And Matt is going to be researching that. And and now I know that it is time to go to the item that was scheduled for nine fifty-five.
Mayor Slaven, one quick, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
I'm remembering on Thrive, at the last working session, I think it was Steve's suggestion that we wanted to solicit a viewpoint from all the committee chairs.
Okay, well, we will.
And I think your suggestion was that the town manager sent out the note.
Yeah.
To them. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. We will definitely do that. And now I will call either the nine fifty-five item, Discussion Motion to Consider Approval of a Resolution Endorsing the Somerset P T A Position on the Board of Education Boundary Survey and Plan for Somerset Elementary School. And before I turn it over to the town manager, I I think you all know that I have signed up to testify tomorrow night at the Board of Education, which is an in-person testimony. And anyone that would like to come is welcome to come with me. And I'm planning to testify in support of the P T A's position. And and I was asked who I'd be representing, and I said that I'm representing myself and my position and possibly depending on what you vote tonight. And so what I would suggest is if you take a position that we then assign the town manager to write the testimony. And with that, I will turn it over to the town manager.
Yeah, so um, this all kind of took place late last week and Councilmember Rovak worked with Ron to put together a quick resolution that essentially supports the Somerset Elementary School P T A's position on the boundary changes and is showing support of Mayor Slaven's testimony before the Board of Education as a unified stance for the town officials.
Thank you, Council President Circo. Do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Barr.
No, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Councilor Barr.
Well, maybe you could just state what your position is and what P T A's position is so that we're all on the same page with it. I mean, I have got my own understanding of it, but I just want to make sure we all know what we're talking about.
Perhaps Matt can summarize the letter. Did you? Did did everybody? I assume everybody got a copy of the letter from the P T A.
We did.
I can summarize it if you want.
Okay, why not? Go for it.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Um, so basically, the the Somerset Elementary School P T A stance is to oppose moving forward of the superintendent's recommendation of the boundary study because they believe that the data is based on pre-pandemic numbers that are no longer valid. And that the recommendation went forward without changes that do not use the school's input or community's input. And then also with the pandemic going on, these kids kind of just back in school for their first full year again, that moving children to a different school would affect their socio-emotional health. And they want to have it postponed at the very least.
Hey, thanks.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Barr?
Yes, it does.
Do you? Did you have any other comments?
Other questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar. No, Councilor Heller, I'm sorry.
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Kumar.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager, are there any resident, is there any resident or guests who had indicated it?
Not this evening, no.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Shannon, will you make a motion?
Um, I make the motion to approve a resolution endorsing the Somerset P T A position on the Board of Education Boundary Survey and Plan for Somerset Elementary School.
Second.
Is your second? I see Councilor Kumar. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we could revise the resolution slightly. The last sentence says the council directs the mayor to issue a letter to the school board, but since you're going to testify as well, we could add and testify on behalf of the town council to give you that additional authority, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so.
Let's do that.
Is the maker of the motion accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
So Rovak, and does the seconder accept that second the friendly? Okay, is that sufficient, Mr.? Do they need to vote on the amendment? Do they need to vote on the amendment?
We we can have one one motion on the resolution as amended.
Okay, fine. So is there further discussion on the red on the motion as amended? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we will get that. We will get that going. We will now return to the manager's report.
Sorry about that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly running through a couple of different items. The leaf vacuuming is going to start this week. So I I did notice as I was driving through town today, some folks have already begun to put some leaves over to the curb. So I'll make sure to send out a notice to the town, letting them know that that service is available again this year. And just a quick reminder on what what kind of the directions are to in in order to to be doing that. A couple of exciting potential projects from the Environmental Committee. They've done some legwork and some homework to look into a few potential spots to put in solar panels on town property, one at the town hall and another at the pool. And there's potential to to use that not just to provide power to those facilities, but potentially even to plug into our 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 main over on Dorset Avenue to provide that power to our streetlights. So that could potentially be, we're we're still kind of early on in it, but potentially a money-saving infrastructure project as well, which which would be double in me in terms of positives. I also wanted to note, we took the big action of adopting the stormwater ordinance today. Our code says that ordinances go into effect thirty-six days after they're adopted. So starting in January really is when that becomes a part of our code and part of the official consideration process and part of the review process for permits that come in.
Not December?
I'm sorry?
Not December?
Well, uh, actually, that's a good point. I should look at the calendar because it may it may fall right. And actually, I should, maybe I'll I'll talk to talk to Ron about that as well.
Let's let him do that.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah.
It's it's a good point, because the December meeting is a little bit later in the month, so it might it might just fall.
Let's let him.
In any case.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to be efficient here.
Yeah, in in any case, one other thing that I wanted to mention with that is had a brief conversation. Yeah, in 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 any case, um, one other thing that I wanted to mention with that is uh had a brief conversation with uh Neil Weinstein. Um, and so. Uh, they're working to finalize their report and master plan uh for us. And Doug and I uh are also going to have a a phone call with him about any additional. Uh, opportunity C Cs in our code that we might consider. Um. And then um. I guess the the last thing that I I'll just uh make a note of tonight, um, two, two quick things. Um. One is the website redesign. Uh, Mayor Slaven um was working with. At the Communications Committee Chair Barbara Marinus while I was gone um to to get the ball rolling on that. So I I appreciate their work on that. We have a questionnaire that we just finished uh today that's going to go out to um a sampling of residents throughout town. Um, to help uh, to help inform uh what, what we, what we want that to to start to look like. They have created a a site map for us and uh we're we're also scheduled to have a couple of discussions over the next couple of weeks with them. And then um, the last thing is uh just a reminder that we, although we dedicated the meeting space here in the town hall to. Um, Barbara and Franny, we also have a a dedication to former Council President um Marnie Shaw that's um. Will be working to uh schedule uh a a specific dedication event for, once we have the details finalized for that. Um, otherwise, I I'm happy to um talk with any of you individually or one-on-one. And uh by the end of this week, I'll also. Disseminate a a financial report, so you have an opportunity to look at that. I apologize that I didn't have that available for you this evening.
Thank you for that excellent report, Matt. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Oops, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barr. Do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller.
No questions.
Councilmember Kumar.
No questions, Matt. Welcome back.
Councilor Rovac.
No questions, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I know that the time is nine forty-four and um. Uh. So I would, I would like to, uh, if, if you feel that you have another. At the most fifteen minutes to dedicate to a brief executive session on for legal matters. Do, do you, does the council have the time now? Or do we need to schedule it for another time this week?
No, let's do it. Would be my vote.
Is everybody, is everybody?
We're all here. Let's do it now.
Okay, so um, Council, Mr. Town Attorney, can you advise? The, I I assume Council President Circo will make the motion, but could you advise him what it need? Because it needs to include certain things.
Yes, we need a motion to enter closed session pursuant to General Provisions Article Section three, three oh five. Be seven to consult with the town attorney to obtain legal advice on legal matters, namely an enforcement matter. Pending litigation. Swim lessons at the town pool and a potential enforcement matter.
Yes, so that's, that's his motion.
Yeah, you can say so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I see Heller. Is there discussion hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. So to the members of the public who are attending, thank you for being here tonight, and we will now. Move into executive session.
And just to clarify, we will exit e- executive closed session. To then adjourn the meeting. Is that right, Ron? So so for any members of the public, they they are free to to wait in the waiting room, and I will admit them in once we. Go back into open session. Is that, is that correct?
Um, well, typically, we just adjourn. We don't go back into open session unless there's a need to go back into open session.
Fair enough. Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying.